You gotta be careful what you say, man.
Yep.
I can't hear you. I'm here.
So this is the first one I've had. Okay, well, it sounds good. They have their condition there. I could not hear anything.
I think they're drunk.
Sure. The only thing I could hear was that. It just, I could not hear anything.
Yeah, I don't know. It's all recorded how well.
Well, I wasn't able to hear anything.
So next Tuesday would be July 22nd. What time, what time did you show? 10 o'clock, or 9, or 8, or what time was it? 2:00 in the afternoon? Okay, alright.
How are you?
I'm good.
How's your mama doing?
She's doing good.
Good.
We went to the fair last night.
Oh, did ya? Was it warm?
It was hot. Did you see me?
No.
I did not see you.
I was gonna take a photo.
You can't hardly see us. Sorry, I didn't see you. I was also distracted.
Rachel, how are you?
Good. Kinsey and Commerce.
Oh.
It's hot, yep.
Yeah, we told you, no tape was.
Oh, boy.
That's Brian's best friend.
Oh, okay. There you go. There you go, Mom.
We're gonna do a moment of silence.
Are you okay?
For Harry Prey.
House coming along?
That's mine.
Oh, okay. Uh...
Is the hospital guy here?
Yes, I guess that's his.
You Nick? Okay, cool.
Yeah, oh yeah. Key, key right here. We gotta have, we gotta have that. I mean, it's not gonna work. But anyway. Nick, may as well be. See him come in? He shouldn't stand. Oh, no, you can't. No, you can't.
Yes.
Yes, we need to.
I ran deep fryer in that thing. Oh my goodness. Spicy chicken, regular chicken, potato wedges. I mean, I was just nonstop for like an hour. I felt like a French fryer.
You felt like a French fryer? You were a French fryer.
Okay, two-minute warning. Last minute. There's still some agendas on the back wall. Bathrooms are in the rear. If you need to avail yourself.
Did you go well? I always hate those. You know, it's true. I'm waiting for it, haven't been guys. When you don't, it makes it for all, all weekend before and after.
Buddy's mic's on. You turn on, is that one on? Okay, I flipped over to 6:30. I will call the July 14th meeting of the Westport Town Council to order. We'll start by standing and doing a pledge to the flag, and then immediately after the pledge, we're gonna have a moment of silence in memory of Harry Prey, former board president. He passed away, and they had his funeral last week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. You may be seated. Okay. Have my board members had a chance to read the minutes from the June 9th meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. If they, everything is kosher, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes as presented. Dolores?
Yep. I didn't know I was supposed to say anything.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a second from Glenn? All those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Okay. to support that. Can I get a motion to approve these?
I'll make the motion.
And a motion from Jenny. Can I get a second? Russell? Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? 2. Nick, if we can get you to come up to the microphone here, please. One last signature. There we go.
Sorry.
Okay, what do you got?
Alright, I'm Nick Mormon with CNN Concrete and Excavation, representing Decatur County Memorial Hospital. We're proposing to put in parallel parking in front of their wellness center there on East Mulberry. It'll make them ADA compliant for parking, just right in front of that sidewalk. Right now, their ADA access is the back, and you go through the rear of that wellness center, which isn't allowed anymore in a medical facility. So, I have a drawing here. The orange is the existing sidewalk, the red is our proposed parallel parking there. So that gives them 2 ADA parking spaces, as well as access to the building.
Okay, I'm seeing 3.
Yeah, 1 is just a normal parking space.
Okay.
Yeah.
2 ADA plus a 3.
Yeah.
People use this as parallel parking right now, don't they?
Yeah, it's just not paved, so it's not ADA compliant, because that has to be a hard surface.
Okay.
So yeah, they'll have it. Decatur County Memorial Hospital will get it striped and everything, and we'll put signs up for handicap accessibility.
Does this have to go to area plan after us, or are we the final stop? Where's Damon?
I believe we have to.
Okay.
I've made the road, and their wealth, the road's development plans.
Okay.
State list and all that should be gone. The minimum making speed in those 21, so. I mean, they might check their plan, but I was gonna see why they have.
Okay. So, would somebody like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve the 2 ADA plus 1 additional parallel parking in front of the clinic?
I can make that motion.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Jenny? Any discussion? Any of the board members? Well, we've got the expert here. This looks pretty clean, cut and dried.
Are you gonna be taking out the one big tree there on the corner?
No, yeah, the tree will stay. We won't be working in that area.
Oh, you don't do that.
No, yeah, well, we're just working right in front of that existing sidewalk there. I guess you can't really see it, but...
No, I can't see it.
On my drawing, it's shown on my drawing as well, but yeah, the tree's not over there.
I know what you're, I know what you're talking about. I've been over there.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? You got it unanimous.
Alright, I get you. Oh yeah, you can keep that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commonwealth, Rachel.
Hi. I had sent over several documents via email. It kinda got updated late, and I got some additional stuff in today. I'll give all this to Gloria. But wastewater project update, the Forest Main is installed. They're focusing now on the lift station and the wastewater treatment plant. They have a little bit of buttoning up and cleanup still to do on the Forest Main route, but primarily now they've moved on to the 2 sites. A lot of electrical work is scheduled for July, and I expect August will be pretty busy as well with both electrical excavation and construction. The items I have to present are pay application number 4 for the contractor, as well as change order number 1. Today, I received change order number 2 as well. It may be too late to consider it for this meeting, but I wanted to go ahead and bring it. I can leave a copy with you if you're not ready to approve it today. So, I'm happy to go into details about what's included in those. I did bring, I printed out the update memo. I wasn't sure if the one I sent had, was in time to get printed. So, do you want me to pass this out?
Please.
There is a brief regulatory update on the second page, and some photos, as usual, at the end, just showing construction. And then it outlines what's included in the pay application and the change order. I'm happy to go into details on that if you'd like.
Yeah, tell us about change order 1, what all it includes.
Yep. Change order 1 includes both adds and credits or savings to the project for several modifications that have occurred so far. Hatches, larger hatches on the wet wells, a change in the type of panel for the automatic transfer switch and control panels from a 4X, we're going to 3R, cost savings. Savings by eliminating some conduit that was redundant, eliminating a small gate, and adding 2 bypasses, 1 at the lagoons and 1 at the lift station. There's no time adjustment requested from the contractor with this change order, just cost. So the substantial completion with this would remain at October 9th, and final completion November 8th of this year. And then, change order 2, which I also brought a couple copies of, is for the generator, to change the generator from a diesel to a natural gas generator at the lift station site. That one does have a time extension requested of 150 days to substantial. This would be just for the work at the lift station. It wouldn't impact completion of the project at the plant. So the plant could continue as currently proposed, currently under contract. Lift station would be delayed just because the lift station needs to have redundant power. If the power were to go out, we need, it needs to have a generator to back it up. So in order to fully transition that, they need the generator installed. And then, pay application number 4 is primarily for the Forest Main, finishing up the Forest Main installation, a little bit of electrical work, and some costs because generator, purchasing and delivering the generator at the plant. Happy to, I can provide those. I also have a zero-cost amendment to Commonwealth's contract, and this is just to move some funds around internal. The contractor got, because the contractor started a little later than we had hoped, we are, we saved a little bit of money with our onsite time. However, it added to some of the labor, the paperwork labor that we did in the office. So it's just moving some money around for 0, 0 add, 0 credit, just moving it around to get us up to speed. So I have several copies of each of these. I had emailed a couple of them. I don't, I know that change order 2, the generator didn't make it in time, so I can leave this with you if you want to continue to review it, or happy to go into more detail about the specifics.
The only thing that I didn't hear in either change order 1 or 2 is the elevation change on the exit point of the new Forest Main into Lagoon 1. Damon, am I out in left field?
Yeah, I didn't hear it mentioned.
The elevation change?
Well, were they moved out, or were they 45?
We can process that as a change order. It was, I was just assuming it would be a field modification.
Okay.
I don't believe they've asked for any additional costs yet on it.
Okay.
If they do, it'll certainly have to be approved via change order.
Okay.
As a part of construction, the Forest Main has changed a little bit in its route, and that, part of that is expected due to field conditions. I was kind of lumping that into the same category as that. It'll be reflected on the ASB.
What else is in change order 2 besides the generator?
I believe it's just the generator at this point. Change order 2, yep.
We are completely aware of that. I don't know why we would delay it anymore.
And the only thing that has changed since, since when I came to meet during office hours.
Is the time extension.
Time extension, and the cost went up slightly because I believe, very slightly. I think they had to, they forgot to add some kind of overhead on Stregel's side, if I'm not mistaken. It may not have, I may be, I may even think in change order 1. One of the prices went up slightly, in, you know, in the grand scheme of it, it was still very similar to what we discussed. So the total, let's see, I'll go, I'll run through the totals just for record-keeping purposes. Pay application number 4, payment to Stregel proposed is $517,750. Payment to project retainage, $27,250, for a total of $545,000. Change order 1, when you add the pluses and minuses all together, is a total cost of And change order 2 is a total increase of $33,650.
I've got no problem in approving both of those tonight, unless some of my other board members would like more time. We have discussed all of this. The only new piece is the tweak in the numbers and the 150-day extension to get the natural gas generator. But if that's what we have to do in order to get what we want...
And I did talk, I did talk to the contractor about that. He's going to do everything he can get done ahead of time. Primarily, the only thing he won't be able to do is, is the decommissioning and rehab of the existing lift station, because we won't be able to take that one offline until we can put the new generator online. So, he'll be able to have both the new lift station and the old one running at the same time off of primary power. They'll set the new pole, run the new three-phase power, and keep the old power running at the same time, keep the old generator there, and then as soon as the new generator arrives, set it, commission it, start it up, all the, all the things they have to do to properly get it going, then they'll be able to take the old lift station offline. The new lift station, the pumps are bigger, three-phase power, that's the whole, the whole issue. It's 460, whereas the old one is, is a lesser power. So, the existing generator just won't support the new pumps.
Any suggestions from any of my board members? Comfort level on understanding what we're asking for in both of these change orders? Has, has some of this been discussed at your... Yes, all of it. You've thrashed, you've gone through it, and I trust you. All of it has been discussed with different members there. Yeah.
I have a couple of copies I can leave with too, so.
So, change order number 1 is the least risk. I'll make a motion that we approve change order number 1. And that was how much after pluses and minuses?
$85,476.87.
Okay, so I'll make that motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll give it to Glenn. All those in favor of approving pay order, or change order number 1, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the pay app is kind of a no-brainer as well. Everybody's seen the, the, the new Forest Main has passed its pressure test, and now they're gonna be working at both ends, at the lift station and out at the, at the lagoon. So, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and approve pay app number 4. Yeah, $545,000. Can I get a second? Russell, Russell got that one. Okay. All those in favor of approving pay app number 4, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. And then change order number 2 for the new, the new generator, the natural gas generator for the lift station, comes with, what's price tag?
$33,650.
$33,650 and 150-day extension.
To the lift station work only.
To the lift station work. I'm, I'm good with that. So I'll make that motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Got Jenny this time. All those, all those, all those in favor of approving change order number 2 for the generator, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Now, what do I need to sign to show this?
They are, there are 2 of them with little sticky notes. Well, I guess there's 1 copy of each. And then, do we need to approve the 0-cost change for Commonwealth's amendment as well?
Is that gonna require a signature from...
Yes.
Yes, I would go ahead and take a vote on that, authorizing the board president to sign
So I need to make a motion? For the, I will make the motion that the board president can sign the documents.
Yeah, the, it's a 0-cost change within the Commonwealth agreement, so it's, it's a wash.
And there's a copy there if you want to grab one also.
Okay, so I've got a motion from Jenny that I can go ahead and sign the change in the Commonwealth agreement. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Glenn? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
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 All opposed? Got that one. Change order 1, do you have a signature page for change order 2?
Should be.
I didn't see it.
It was mine. There's 3 or 4 copies of each, so it could be all just that. Also, I'll email them signed. I will email the signed copies to you, or if you end up with them, maybe you can scan them in, either way.
Okay, I did the payout. Change order 1. And change order 2.
Rachel, did they not submit them all to the pay for 3 line?
They did, and I, I had some comments back to them on it.
Well, that's fine, because I think it's the best thing for us to try to use one of their first.
Yeah.
In respect to ours.
The one they submitted, I think, I, I just, I sent it back to them with some comments. I think they're looking at it, and they're, they'll reply. Yeah.
I mean, we tried to use one of their first machines, but I don't want to jump in.
They may need to do a little more investigation before we completely decide what, what needs to be done there. Yeah, I agree. The other thing I wanted to comment while you're signing, the next construction meeting is this coming Thursday at 9:00 a.m. Generally, we have it at noon, moved it up. So I don't know who's gonna be at that one, but I'll be there. Damon will be there.
Okay.
Do you want me to grab those and scan them? Either way, I can save them back.
Are these all the same thing?
Yep, all the same thing. I'm actually, Gloria, that's a sign of them also.
Okay.
Damon, did you want to copy?
Why you sending them? Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need to sign all of these, or are these for us to keep?
They're all the same. Yep.
Okay. I'll keep 1. I have an extra copy of the Commonwealth agreement. Who wants it?
Copy of it if you want to sign.
I don't, I don't know that I...
Oh, thank you. I missed a page. Hence the 2 tags.
I was really thinking, Gloria.
Does Gloria have to sign in the second spot here?
USDA, yup, USDA signs bottom.
Gloria got that one, and I got it.
Thank you. I'll get these scanned.
Okay. Next item on agenda is the Westport Area Park Board Ordinance Discussion. The ladies from southeastern Indiana Regional Planning... The ladies from southeastern Indiana regional planning are here again. Would one of you kind of come up and give us a Cliff Notes version again of the park planning process? What? I know I kind of sprung that on you. Explain to us exactly what it is we're, we're looking at here.
Yes, so our organization is hoping to work with the town to create a park plan. What the park plan is, is probably like a 12-month process that you're looking at. Bringing all the key players to the table to get input on existing conditions of parks and what you'd like to see in the future. We pulled together some statistic information, some graphics, put it into a park plan document, which is kind of a roadmap for the community to use for future projects. What this can do is, for instance, DNR offers grants, trail grants, park improvement grants, and you aren't eligible for those unless you have a park plan in place, so. So what we're proposing is if the board would like to move forward, look at passing an ordinance at your next month's meeting to establish a park board. We'll work with your attorney to make sure that the template is reviewed and language is correct on everything. And then probably in September, have really a kickoff meeting, bring everybody to the table, have a discussion, really figure out what events are coming up that we can, you know, go to people and get their input on park plans, what events can we hold? We have engagement boards that will engage with the community, have discussions. So like I said, it is about a 12-month process. We're hoping to start it earlier so that we can really get to know your town, the community, and what needs are here.
I think one of the things we discussed, one of the first things you would do, you had said something about getting a table at the barbecue in September, and I would assume hand out surveys or?
Yep, absolutely. We'll have a survey that we release.
Interact with the community.
Yep.
See what, what they're interested in. How many members was it for, the park board?
It is four, yes.
And in order to participate in this process, having a park board in place is a prerequisite?
To get it, yes. It is a prerequisite to getting your plan complete.
Right.
And then it is a requirement. So DNR will actually review the plan once it's complete if they have any adjustments that they want made, but creating a park board is kind of like the foundation of.
Yeah, and Department of Natural Resources is an organization that I don't believe the town has worked with before. I don't know what kind of pile of money they're setting on or what, what that could make available to us possibly, but that would kind of be my end goal, to open up new avenues for, for park improvement money that are significant. And by significant, hundred, two-hundred, three, four-hundred thousand or more.
Sure, yes.
Is, is what I'm thinking. So I'm not off in the weeds.
Nope.
Okay.
Question, I was heard that we were, this would open in the South for a minute for $500,000. We, this now is just a planning session and then we fall into applying for grant, correct?
Correct. This is kind of a prerequisite to qualifying for these bigger grants. So a lot of the, some other funding agencies too, but DNR specifically, if you want to apply for grant money, they'll say, okay, we'll entertain your application, but we need to see a copy of your approved park plan. You have to have that in place to even qualify.
So if the majority is in opposition, after you're done with your plan, we're not obligated to take the plan, correct?
So the plan, that would be adopted at the end. So once DNR reviews it, we'll obviously work with the town. That would be an adopted plan that the town has. And then it's really up to you if you want to move forward with applying for any grants. So basically, we're going to hand you a plan that you can either set on the shelf somewhere or you can actually use it and say, okay, from this, we would like to create these projects, so let's go after these funding sources.
So the plan would, okay, go ahead. So the plan would contain possible sources of funding that we would want to go after, may not be committed at that point.
Right, it would, it would outline some possibilities for you.
Tell us where to look, where to go.
Yeah, and that is all determined based on our meetings, what the input is, you know, what type of projects you're looking at. And then we can determine what sources are out there for those.
Okay, Glenn. Yeah, I think I heard you say there would be four on this board. That, that is a very unusual number. There's usually a three or a five, an odd, so that there wouldn't be continual potential of tie votes. Would there be any reason why you would say four or can you adjust, or can we adjust that if we want?
So in the directions for the park plan, it says no more than two of the same party. So they usually recommend four. There is some language in there. If you are a smaller town, then there can be some discretion on that, but they strongly encourage you to stick with the four. So that's something I'd like to work with your attorney on if this is approved and you do move forward. Getting that ordinance established next month obviously is going to have that language in there, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So a little bit on what a new park board would do. And I'll tell you what I think is in my head, is they would maybe help you go through some of the survey information. They would certainly review any of the plans and they would hopefully coalesce on the recommended plan to bring back to us the board.
Correct.
On, you know, what, what is the big picture, the big change.
Yep, yeah, absolutely. It would be more of the reporting body, your core group of making those decisions. However, we will try to bring everybody to the table, but when anything specific needs to go, then that can be designated to just your park board, where it's not something, you know, council has to deal with that. If it's parks related, then you have a separate core team that can work with you to bring those decisions to you.
It wasn't completely evident to me in the ordinance template how the park board was put together as far as, is it appointed by the town board?
That, it can be. So they don't have specific language on who has to appoint. It's more of who's on the board, cannot serve on council.
Right.
Or any boards of that nature, county.
Can't be an elected official.
Yeah, so, so that's something I feel like you all could work together and determine who makes most sense to be on that board.
Could we put language in the ordinance to say we want one of the board seats to go to a Kiwanis member? Because for our park, that's where all of the legacy knowledge resides.
Yeah, and that would make sense. I think the template is provided as just that. So if we have any tweaks like that, I'm sure it would be allowed, so.
Maybe I'm just kind of naive, but why is there a political part in this of having two from each parties? Why is this a political choice?
Yeah, and that, that I don't have an answer to, unfortunately. It's just in DNR's instruction manual. That's what they require, and it's been that way for years, as long as I've seen it, so.
They've always done it that way?
Yeah, so that I don't, sorry, I don't have an answer for you. It's just.
My guess, my guess would be in a bigger community, it would force you to work across the aisle with the other party. In a small community, I don't know that we could, I don't know, of the people that we've talked to about the possible park board, I don't actually know their political affiliations. I just know that we've got some people that are interested.
Sure.
In participating. So. Okay. In the proposal that I gave to SIRPC, yes?
Good question.
I just have a question. For to be on the park board, do you have to be a, live in the city limits of Westport? Or is it open for people in the area?
It's a good question.
I believe you do have to live within the town limits of Westport.
Okay.
The political affiliation, is it no more than two? Or you have to have two of each?
The way it's worded, it says you have to have two of each, so.
Based on our population, could we get an exception to that? I don't see politics that would cause a problem.
Yeah, no, and that language isn't there, but maybe have your attorney review that and see what works with us.
There's a waiver provision in the statute.
Okay.
That I think would be a potential avenue of approach.
Yeah.
For Westport.
It doesn't need to be political. And if we can take that out, I think that would be to our benefit. So when this came up last month, it got a little contentious. It felt a little sudden. So what I had proposed to SIRPC is a straw vote, non-binding, no ordinance. And the question on the table would be, are my board members in favor of creating a park board in order that we might participate in this planning process with SIRPC, being that it's a prerequisite?
Can we have input from the full?
Yeah, absolutely. First though, I want to give my board members time to let me know whether they are in favor or against and why. So I'll start down here, Dolores.
Well, I'm in favor of it, all the way across the board. I, it's just time for Westport to come into it, and I'm ready for it. So, we, we need it, we deserve it, and I think we should go for it, so.
Okay, Jenny.
All right, I wrote this down because I'm not good at talking.
Okay.
I forget things.
Sure.
So, there's been, I think, a lot of contention in a lot of the changes since the community building changed and, you know, there's been a lot of confusion and unfortunately, there's nothing we can do about that. That's, that's happened. What we have to do now is look to the future of what we want to do with Westport. Financial issues is a huge thing for everybody right now everywhere. It doesn't matter if it's personal, business, an organization, the government, everybody is tight on money. Including the Kiwanas and the community building board, that was, they were having trouble keeping up financially. The world has also changed as far as community service. Times were a lot different 100 years ago. There was a lot more community involvement. That was very important back then. So the community service organizations that used to do a lot are kind of hindered now by the numbers dropping. So I think at this point, it is the best interest of everybody to work together. You know, not one, not one can take this on, especially with all of the changes that our park needs. I've talked to a lot of families with children in the community. They wanted, they want a better park. They want a, they want a park upgrade. There's lots of things that need, need upgraded. And it's extremely expensive. It's extremely expensive to do it. So I'm hoping that we can establish the park board for both parties to be able to work together. The Kiwanas, the town board, and the community members to all come together and figure out what we want to do. I understand the emotions involved. I understand the holding on to the way it was set up and the way that it, you know, has, has always been. I, I do understand those emotions. But at the same time, that line of thinking hinders the future. So I am absolutely saying yes. I don't want to step on anybody's toes. That is not at all what I'm, what I am voting for to do this. I want everybody to come together, to work together. For the Kiwanas and the town, our main focus is serving our community. That's what it should be about. And I don't think community members care where the money comes from and who does it, as long as they get the park that they want. So, that's all I have.
Okay, Glenn? I'm gonna go last.
Okay.
President's privilege.
I understand. I've done that before in some other areas. Well, I, I am learning. And I'm inclined, I'm going to use that word because I'm not going to commit to a yes or no, but I'm inclined to, to support establishing a, a, a park board. And with this, I would hope that the board, if we're going to call it a board, has some, and I don't want this to be negative, but has some age differences in the board. I would not want to see the board made up of people of my decade, of seventies. I'd like to see some younger people in it, and I would also insist, if I had my way, of a Kiwanis member, at least one, if not two, to be on that board. In respect, in somewhat respect to their tremendous input over the years. Because we want, as, as my fellow member said, we want to honor that. And so that's pretty much where I stand. I'm not a, I'm inclined to support it, but I have a month to decide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Russell?
Seventy-five years ago, the Westport Kiwanis first purchased the Westport schools that park for the community. Kiwanis Club could not own property, so they signed the park to the town of Westport. They were given a 100-year lease to maintain the park. After 75 years of fundraising and work maintaining the park, the town wants to try for a 500,000 grant. I think that was brought up before, say that's not part of it, but need a park board. Town board says Kiwanis have a, may have, currently have one member on the board. I feel that we'd like to have the grant, but there's no grant involved. But if we turn this over to the park and take, take it away from the Kiwanis, then the town is going to be stuck with the upkeep of the park. The Kiwanis currently spend $15,000 a year on the park, plus the labor they put in. I am also on DeKater County Park Board, and for the information, basically for Jenny, not to mean information, the park board president came down to Westport, inspected it, and he went to town, or went to the park board, said, "We need to put a sign up, DeKater County Park." I'm on the park board. This is the best park in DeKater County other than the one at Greensburg. And I feel like if there's going to be a park board, it should be the Westport Kiwanis. And they do have some age difference.
Okay.
I am categorically a known, unless Kiwanis has more than one person input.
I actually agree with part of that.
Oh, you're fine.
Okay, and I, I would be agreeable to writing it into the ordinance of giving Kiwanis two seats on the board. Maybe an older member and a younger member if we could get it. Frankly, I think we're silly if we don't take advantage of this opportunity to participate in this planning process. It's, it's not going to cost us much at all. It's going to give us an idea and hopefully open doors that Kiwanis couldn't open by themselves. And frankly, the town couldn't open by themselves either. It's, it's going to need the park board, and that's going to be our gesture to the agencies, to SIRPC and to DNR, that we're serious. And if we, if we don't do this, they will take their resources and go to another community that is interested. And from what I'm getting, we're, at least three of us are very interested, a fourth is inclined, and one person is not. So, that's good enough for me to work with Alex over the next month to put the actual ordinance together. You can be seated, but I can't guarantee there won't be any more questions.
No problem.
And I will open it up to public comment this time. So Mike, would you like to say a couple of things?
I, I do hope we've explained it well enough. Do you understand what we're trying to do? So we'll see.
Yes. I am not on the Kiwanis board currently, so I'm speaking as just a Kiwanis member.
Okay.
Okay.
So noted.
Do what?
So noted.
Okay. I, I had some questions. With the establishment of the park board, Kiwanis has a contract where you pay Kiwanis $6,000 a year for expenses and stuff that we do at the park. Will the park board, will this contract stay in effect, or does that go to the new park board to operate from?
Personally, I don't see that changing from the town board to the Kiwanis.
Okay. And you've kind of answered a couple of my questions that I had already about that our representative would have to be a Westport resident and may or may not have to be of a particular political party, correct?
If we can neuter the ordinance to where we don't have to have a certain number of Democrat, Republican, Independent, whatever, that would, that would be the direction I would like to take it.
Yeah. The, the Kiwanis Club has always made the park a important part of what we do. We feel like the park is important. We have applied for grants several different times. We were fortunate this year to be able to get one from the Community Foundation and another grant to go towards the pickleball at that point. We, like Russell said, we spend between $12,000 and $15,000 a year on the park. What a lot of people don't realize is that we have to move that money around to whatever is the squeaky wheel at that point. Because, you know, at some point, the ball diamonds need to be resurfaced. When we do that, that takes a majority of the funds there. We applied for a grant to replace one of the playground pieces of equipment. We've got one piece out there that we can no longer buy parts for. We applied for a Kiwanis grant. There were other parks that were more needy than what we, we were. If we can get funding through this park board to help take care of our park, you know, I am for that.
That's the whole intent.
Yes.
In my mind.
We just, we just want to make sure that, you know.
Am I misrepresenting anything?
No, there, it is not about taking the park away from the Kiwanis.
No, I don't think that was ever the intention. The intention was to make it safer, better, I mean, to be, well, to show how good Kiwanis can be, and how, that Kiwanis can help with all the, after all, what have you guys have done so much for this town.
But that's, that's where I'm at. You know, I, we need the funding, and if this is a way we can get the funding and be able to grow our park, you know, at some point in time, I think we also need to look at something else, that we are landlocked here.
Yeah.
It may be a fact that we need to look at other places in the community to establish playgrounds. We tried that one, once, to put a playground over across the highway for the kids over on that side. The people that were near that area where their house was and where we were going to put it objected to it. So that piece of playground equipment went right out here rather than over there.
Yeah.
But there are other options that are, are there. One of the things that was floated before was a, a walking path to the covered bridge, which would take considerable funding because of the, the right of way that we would need. There's been all kinds of things that we have wanted to do, but we couldn't do. A splash pad was one of them that we looked at. We figured that we could come up with the money for the splash pad, but the problem was, is how do we pay for the water? Because the, the water is, is, it comes out and it's not recycled. It goes right down into the sewer and.
Which, which you cannot do. It has to go through the.
It has to be, yeah, it has to go through the sewer, plan in order. You can't just dump it into the streams anymore. But that kind of answers some questions I have. As long as we have the opportunity to get grants and stuff and make the park a better place, I do not have a problem with that.
Do you know what the biggest grant is that you have ever successfully gotten? I'm, I'm hoping that this process will open some bigger doors.
The, the last one that we got was $10,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that's a, a part of a match for a $500,000. And, and that, that's just a number I threw out. I mean.
We're really talking millions. We're talking to millions.
Possibly, possibly.
A couple of the other things that we did, that we got a lot of donations for, is we've replaced the ball lights twice now.
Okay.
And we were able to partner with, back then it was public service, and we were able to, to get material and stuff from them, the poles and stuff. And then they, their linemen and stuff donated their labor and stuff and came down here and helped us install those.
So, see, and having a servants organization onboard, that, that gives you that avenue to get, you know, to get those resources like that. And I want to, I, I want to preserve that, absolutely.
And as far as, you know, if you give us a position on the board, or a spot on the board, our board of directors will have to appoint that person.
Okay, okay. Getting ready to think out loud, and sometimes that gets me in trouble. But I would think that during the planning process, that certainly Kiwanis would want to be, you would want to interview them. You'd want to know how many, how much square footage they have in the, in the concession stand, how much square footage they need for storage. I think the size of the ball diamond might be on the table. Those fences out there, I think, are bigger than, than what we need as far as distance from home plate for the leagues that we.
It depends upon what, what group that is playing.
Right.
Because it was originally set up to accommodate men and women softball.
Right.
For that group.
Yep.
Right now, it is set up for Pee-wee, Little League, and Major League. We are actually short on the bases because we participate with other communities. Our Major League had to be 75 feet instead of 90 because the other communities that have the diamonds could not go to 90 feet.
Couldn't do 90, yeah. Yeah.
And it just depends upon what type of recreational opportunities that we're offering, whether it is just for the youth, or it opens it up for the adults to be able to play down here also.
I think that's certainly something to take into consideration. Another thing is parking. We are sorely in need of parking down here. I know the lady that, Haven Gasper, that did the presentation, she eliminated the tennis court down there, and this was just her proposal, and made the basketball courts out here dual use, turned them into basketball, tennis, pickleball. I think the existing concession stand was gone, but you got a new concession stand at the other end with another shelter house where people could actually sit. So it, it's ideas like that that I think this process is gonna flush out, and it will be the park board's job to guide, and again, I use the word coalesce or funnel down to a final decision as to what, what is our best alternative. So.
And, you know, if we, if we can get different ideas from members of the community as to what they would like to see, that's, that's great. One of the last projects that we did out here is we had a request about the basketball court. That an individual was wheelchair-bound and was using that to play basketball, but the ball kept rolling off the court, down the, the hillside and under the bleachers. And so that, that project, we put in a, a backstop there to keep that from happening.
That's where that fence came from.
That's where the fence came from.
Okay.
So we're, we're always open to ideas if people give them to us.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for me?
All right. I'll entertain any other input from anybody else in the audience if you'd like to speak up on this topic. So Russell, based on that, are you still no?
I'm scared too, members.
We'll see what we, see what we can do.
That's what I say.
I would be okay with that.
If it's two members.
If you don't know it's two, I'll wait on Glenn, but I'll tend to.
Okay, okay. So that gives, that gives two extra seats for the community at large, and we just have to be smart about who, who we put into that, into those other seats, and make sure we get a good cross-functional, diverse, all the buzzwords. But in this case, it's needed. I mean, I, I'm a single guy. I don't have a dog in fight. But I, I understand the process. I understand what they're wanting to do, how they're wanting to do it, where they're wanting to go. I asked them earlier if this was similar to the quality-based selection process that we're getting ready to go through on the water tower. It, it, it is similar. It, it's not exactly like, this is a, a planning process. QBS is not quite that. We're gonna be looking at proposals and stuff. But we have used QBS twice, once for the sewer project, another for the water project, and now we're getting ready to go through it for a third time. And by guiding us with, with SIRPC, I, I am completely comfortable with, with them, even though this is a pilot project. Have you, are you running any other pilot projects in parallel with ours, or are we truly the first? Okay, so we're not alone. All right. Okay.
Well, I know she's gonna get mad at me, but we have one of, somebody here that would like to serve on the board. She's a mother, a young mother. You have anything to say, Ms. Tanner? Just real quick.
You want to come up to the microphone, please?
She doesn't want to, and I'm gonna hear about it. You can take it to the bank.
Yeah. Tanner, tell us who you are, how many children you have.
Waddle, waddle. It's all right. We don't mind waddling.
My name is Tana Decker. I've lived in Westport my entire life. I have a four-year-old daughter at home and a soon-to-be newborn. It's gonna pop out any day now. So we frequent the park pretty often. My daughter loves to go on walks. We live just a few streets over, and my husband and I are here all the time, all spring, all summer, all fall, even in the winter, she likes to come down here. And we've noticed that there definitely is some areas where the park could be improved. I mean, we're here often, and we, you know, frequent every piece of equipment out there. My nephews play baseball here in the summer. We've been here all summer watching them play baseball. And so we've definitely got a feel for things that need improved, things that could get done to better be inclusive for everyone. We love the area. We love the town. We, you know, like being in Westport, and I think there is huge room for improvement and things that we could do to make it, you know, better for everyone, for everyone to want to frequent the area more often, for it to just be a safe place for kids to play. Like I said, my daughter runs around, she's crazy. She definitely, there are definitely pieces of equipment we really have to watch her on, or different areas where we don't let her run around. So I think, I mean, I've lived here my entire life. I've played at the park myself whenever I was little. So it's just something that I have a great interest in, and I want to see improved, and I want to see it, you know, better for her. And then once my newborn daughter gets old enough, she can enjoy it, you know, in its, all of its glory. So that's really where my interest is. I agree with really everything that Jenny said, that it's not, I have no interest in, like, trying to take anything away from anyone. It's just trying to make it a better place for families to gather if they want to be here. I speak to a ton of people in the community. We're out all the time, and I've heard a lot of people, you know, give pros and cons on the area that I think could, you know, help improve. So I think getting outsiders' opinions is really important, not just my opinion, not just, you know, a group of people's opinions. You want people that live here to also, you know, want to put in their two cents as well. So that's really it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your input.
No problem.
Anyone else? While we close the discussion section on this? So I think we've almost got a consensus if we could put two Kiwanis members on the park board. So we've got some tweaking to do to the template. Alex? Yes, Sandy?
This doesn't have anything to do with what you said. It's just to let people know, but, you know, like, the Kiwanis did spend a lot of money, I think it was last year or the year before, when they put the roads on the concession stand and dug it out and did all that work. That are big projects. Last year, I know we did screens. We also did a.
I can't remember which year.
Okay. Okay. So I just.
Our, our year starts in October. It gets confusing as to which year.
So I just wanted, I'd like people to be aware that, and no, it wasn't a new big piece of playground equipment, but it was substantial amount of money. It wasn't $100,000, like no means, but there was money put into the park that maybe the normal person wouldn't have even noticed anything I've done.
Yeah. This, this, this is an opportunity that has been placed in front of us that I, I think for, for the betterment of the community. We, as a leadership team here, as a board, if we don't attempt to take advantage of it, I think we're doing the community a disservice. So, all right, we will move on. Request to use police donation fund to repair the police department floor. We have a quote of $10,847. Let's see, where did that quote go? Right here. So what happened? It was early June on a, it was a Friday evening when we had the three and a half, four, five inches of rain. And at first, I thought the creek got up and got into the police department, but the parking lot flooded in front of the police department, and the drain we got there could not keep up, and the water literally came in the two front doors. Is that right, Damon? And warped the laminate that's in there now. This is a quote for the type of floor that you're sitting on right now, this material, correct? Damon? Same company. So is the question, Gloria? We have the amount of money needed to do it. It is in the police donation fund. Have we asked Joe if he's okay with using that?
I, I was understanding you.
And I haven't talked to him yet.
I'm sure he'll be fine. I mean, I'll, I can ask him tomorrow or this evening, but if he wants it done, I could speak to him.
The donation fund didn't have very much money into, in it at all until 2022, and I had forgotten that in 2022, Joe, on behalf of the Westport Police Department, received a very large settlement from an investigation. This is several years back.
Okay.
And it's like $14,000 and something, and we put that in the donation fund, which we had already, already established. And now, looking through and trying to find some funding for this, because this is outside of our budget for this year, we have $16,065.82 in that donation fund. This year, we've only had $20 donated to the fund. So it's very hidden. So it's very hidden miss. In most years, we don't have any donations.
Can I make a motion that we do this contingent upon Joe's agreement, that we can use the police department fund?
Have any of those funds been appropriated, Gloria? So we need to have an appropriation, additional appropriation ordinance?
I don't know. This is a donation fund, very similar to the community fund. So my understanding is we don't necessarily have to have that appropriated.
Well, if the town's going to be spending money, generally speaking, and almost without exception, it would be from appropriated funds. And so, you know, you could, I guess, what you could do is essentially treat this as a first reading, if you wanted to, of an ordinance to appropriate funds from the police department gift fund for this purpose. Of course, we would need to draft the ordinance between this month and next month. And we'll do that. It sounds like there needs to be a discussion with Joe as well.
Okay, so we can, we can put together the ordinance for the appropriation for next month, put it on the agenda.
Sure.
Nobody's going to, nothing horrible is going to happen if we, we go for another month. Kaylee, you got a comment?
Okay, suspend this way for today for a while. Is there anything else strange?
Well, this floor would be impervious to water if it should get on there. But I think as a second step, it should be taken, taken a look at. I don't know whether it can be improved or not. The rain event that we did get was pretty much unprecedented. I don't know when the last time we had that much.
We need to start fixing some of these water problems we have.
If this has caused a problem, water numbers causing a problem, it needs to be looked at from two different angles here.
Fair enough.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, fair enough. That's not going to stop us from fixing the floor.
No, I understand. I just think we need to look at the issues that were called in.
Okay, well, maybe we don't vote on anything here tonight. We need to draft an ordinance for an appropriation. We could suspend the rules and pass it on first reading next month.
Well, it'll be spending money, so it'll have to, it'll require two readings. And that's why I was suggesting that maybe this evening, if the town council were inclined to, you could vote on first reading this evening to pass the additional appropriation contingent upon talking with Joe, having a written ordinance, and then treating next month as the second reading of the ordinance.
That is an alternative for us, that we could do that.
Yes, and really what we would also need to do is have an additional appropriation notice that I can put together and send over to you.
I know how to do all of that. I can take care of that. I just understood in the donation funds, you didn't always have to ask for an additional appropriation, but I'll double check that.
So should we make a motion? It would be essentially the first reading of an appropriation to appropriate money to repair the police department floor for $10,847 for first reading. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, go second from Dolores. Any discussion? We're kind of doing first reading without something to read, but if the attorney says we're legal and we can finish second reading next month, then we can do it. So has a motion been made and it's seconded that we go ahead and do this? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Okay, we do have an ordinance for appropriations that is due for second reading. We read this last month and first reading was passed. This is some Community Crossings money and then some MVH operating supplies money, Community Crossings reimbursement. We're asking for $69,196.02. Next one is MVH operating supplies, $18,000, MVH professional services, $11,000 total for MVH fund, $29,000.
And just to explain, Brian, on the MVH, it's money that the state gave us for our community crossing grants, which pay for the sidewalks. And this was the extra money that was left over that we now have to return back to the state. Ideally, we would have returned it last year, but they have not completed all the paperwork to finalize that. So until I get an invoice from them, I can't send it back to them. So unfortunately, it ran into this year's budget.
Okay. Any other questions for Gloria?
No.
So this is an ordinance 2025-4, ordinance for additional appropriations for fiscal year 2025. I'll entertain a motion that we pass this on second reading, please.
I'll make the motion, or Russell made the motion. I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion from Russell, a second from Jenny. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So we have a passage on this 14th day of July, 2025. Is the dimensions in the, in the quote, 1,147, is that square feet, Damon? There's an 1147 on, is that what you were asking about?
Just, yeah, I just wondered how, how big the floor was.
Looks like it's just over 1,000 square feet.
1,000?
If that's what, if that's what this is, 1147, it's 755 square foot. Okay, back to the agenda. Okay, emergency response, response plan review for IDIM inspection. Jay is not here. Damon, are you aware of this?
Yes, we have an inspection coming up. We're making sure that was up to date.
So we have an emergency response plan for disaster planning for the Cougar Road Loop up there, that it runs exclusively off of rural water currently. And I have seen these plans before. I sat on the Emergency Management Advisory Board and they do stuff like this all the time. As a matter of fact, I imagine if not this year, early next, EMA will be coming to us to, I believe, ratify a multi-hazard mitigation plan, I believe is what it's called. They have to go to the incorporated towns, New Point, Nohausen, St. Paul, Westport, and make sure that they're on board. Hopefully, we'll have time to go through it. It'll be a real snoozer, something that you need a cup of coffee in your hand when you read it. But in order to keep EMA going, it's a requirement that they do that and come to us. This, I imagine, is put, this requirement is put on us by IDIM, I bet. So it's listings of emergency contacts, of contractors. I reviewed it and I've got no problem with this. This is, this is all formality. There's, there's, like I said, contractors, V.L. Anderson, I think I saw in here, there's a, somebody that works on chlorinators. The water hauler people are in here. Ronnie Oliver is, is, he's listed as a resource. So, and when we get all the way to the end. I think there is a date. Do you have a copy of this in the packet, Gloria?
That purple folder right there in your stack?
Oh. Okay.
And you'll sign, I think, the last couple of pages on that. And you draw the council.
Okay. And this was in the email that everybody was sent out, so everybody has seen it. So I will make the motion that we approve the emergency response plan for the Cougar Road Water Loop.
There is a typo on that. I don't know that it matters.
Where's it at?
Response.
Sure is. R-E-S-P-O-N-S-E plan, not C-E. Okay. With that change, I make the motion that we approve this. Can I get a second, please? Sorry. Second by Glenn. Any other discussion? Any questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving the EMA plan for the water indicate by saying aye, please.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. So when IDIM comes down now, we get a check mark in the box. We have a plan in place. Okay. Property concern letter. Dolores, you have a property concern letter from a concerned citizen?
Yes, I did. Yes, I received this July the 10th of this year. It says, "To the town of Westport, we are writing to formally express our concerns regarding a persistent issue with one of our neighbors at Old South Elizabeth Street. This matter has been affecting the appearance, safety, and peace of our neighborhood. The property in question has not been maintained for a considerable period of time. The grass is consistently overgrown and there is debris or junk scattered around the yard. This neglect not only makes our neighborhood look unkempt, but also possesses potential health and safety risks as attracting pests and unwanted rodents. In addition to the property maintenance issue, we and others in the area have experienced bullying behavior from the resident and his children. These actions create a hostile environment and make it difficult for neighbors to feel comfortable in their own homes. We kindly request that the town board continue the investigation on this situation and take appropriate action to enforce local property maintenance and nuisance ordinances. A clean, safe, and respectful neighborhood is something we all deserve. The property mention has deteriorated greatly in the past few years. It is an embarrassment to our street and to our town. Thank you for attention, for your attention to this matter. We are happy to provide further details if necessary. Sincerely, a concerned homeowner." This not only is one, these are, these are two that were brought to my attention. We will be continuing our investigation. We will be continuing with the situation. So she asked me to read this tonight, so I have. And anybody have any comments about it?
Now, where is this? Over on Elizabeth Street. Okay. Superintendent of Public Works report. Damon, what do you got for us?
Only I have, this is scheduled for July 28th. We have the walls, walls done. We got a little, they got a little behind because of the machine that rolled metal out, the actual gold out on site, broke down, gets back up and operational and quick to say begins to 28th of July. So they got up to 28th, 29th, 30th. That's when we'll be here to do that. So they kindly did get it top painted, so.
Is this the inside?
Correct.
Taking, already taking the panel off this wall?
Yes.
Some more concern on the southeast corner.
What about it?
They hadn't been there for years. I'm not worried about the post, but the study, I'm somehow worried about it.
Yeah, once it gets exposed or something wrong, it can be fixed.
Well, I just wanted to make sure they were, I don't care about the rest of the walls because I'm worried about the south wall.
Okay, yeah, once they tear it off, if there's any damage needs fixed.
I figured they would. I just wanted to make sure they were going to take the south wall out.
Yep, I'll make sure it's taken care of once it, once it exposes or something goes wrong, get it changed, whether, why it's.
I'm always worried about that, just make sure you got, I'm going to take it.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. I wrote in the last item, the water tower project, the Quality-Based Selection Scoring Committee is going to be a scoring meeting at the town hall on July 22nd at 2:00 P.M. So this would be a week from tomorrow, 2:00 P.M. in the afternoon. Russell, since you are the, one of the more interested ones in the water tower project, I was wondering if you could make yourself available?
What time is that?
July 22nd, Tuesday at 2:00 P.M.
2:00 P.M.
Two in the afternoon.
Are you going to run the eighth, or eighth morning? Or are you just going to do away with that?
No, I'll, I'll run the morning too. And I don't know, tomorrow would be you. Be with you, yeah, in office hours. The 22nd would be Dolores in normal rotation from eight to noon, and then you could come to the two o'clock meeting. We're looking at five members. So Gloria, I would want to pull you in on the selection committee. Damon, I'd want to pull you in and I'd want to pull Jay.
I'll ask him, I thought there was a little bit of question about that since he's retired from the year and how old he wanted to be, or just for the scoring part?
This is just the scoring part, to look at the proposals. The proposals are due by Monday.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll go through them on Tuesday at 2:00. Okay. All right. That brings us to the end of the agenda. I will open it up to the floor for three minutes. Whoever would like to make any kind of a comment, you're welcome to come up, ask questions, say your piece, whatever you'd like to do. Anyone? Okay?
Was just kind of wanting to see, the Kiwanis hadn't really decided on this, but if we could get permission to close Main Street for our barbecue on September 6th as normal.
Thank you. Hours of closure would be what? 7:30?
I believe it was 7:00 A.M.
Is it 7:00 A.M. or 7:30? Yeah.
7:00 A.M. to?
The last, if you give out trophies at four, so till about, say, six.
Okay, 7:00 A.M. to 6:00 P.M. And that would be closed from Lincoln to Range. Barbecue and car show, I will put in there. I'll make the motion that we approve this request to close Main Street on September 6th of the barbecue and car show. Got a second from Russell. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, taken care of. Thank you, Sandy. Anybody else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I believe the letter that you got is probably about me, which is no big deal. I've received several letters. Last letter had the wrong date and we discussed this, Brian.
Your address is 211 South Elizabeth?
Nope, 209.
209. Okay.
My son has yelled at neighbors' dogs. I can't do anything in my backyard, even come out of my house without a little spitz, continuously barking, running up to the fence and no matter what I do. I do have a dog deterrent now. That's, I'm sure that's who it is. It's Joanne, I'm sure. My yard's mowed twice a week. I don't know, I would say it's not mowed, so. Oh, my beautiful friend, you seen the big red one run the other day, Dolores?
Do what?
You seen the big red one run the other day, but everybody says it doesn't run. Everybody says it doesn't run.
I'm sorry, I still didn't notice.
Yeah, I didn't catch that either.
The big red Ford I am, that everybody thinks it doesn't run.
Oh, the big red Ford truck is running.
Oh, yeah, I know it is. She made sure I knew about it in my house.
All my vehicles do run, are maintained, so. But I will be discussing this. Talk to my lawyer, so. So I'll be discussing this with her, so. That'll be all.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Going once, going twice, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I've made sure I worked it twice.
Who wants to make the motion?
I'll make the, oh, sorry, I second.
There we go. I have a motion by Jenny to adjourn. I have a second from Dolores. All those in favor signify by saying, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.